So let's call this regular meeting of Heartland School Board to order at 6:08. It's Tuesday, January 3rd, first Tuesday of January. So, first question is any changes or additions to the agenda?
Nikki, I would like to add an executive session to discuss personnel.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. You beat me to it. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of December 6th.
I, sorry.
Sure, I saw you nod. I'm a little, I'm a little...
For all days.
I'm jet lagged. Oh, you're jet lagged. I was in California yesterday. Oh geez. So I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I will second the motion.
Okay, Sarah will make the motion and Heather will second. The minutes looked great. I had two comments and I wish I had them in front of me right now, but I don't. One comment is just to spell my name differently. N-I-C-K-I. And then the other comment was, does anybody have them up?
I have them up. Do you want to look?
Yeah.
When we go out, when we adjourn the meeting, it says no vote needed and I would just change that to unanimous consent. Or small.
Robert's rules for small boards.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's just, we're allowed to use unanimous consent, so how do you use... Meeting adjourned by unanimous consent?
Yeah, by unanimous consent.
Okay, so let's change it to that.
Okay. She's on, Leanna's on.
Oh, Leanna's on. Oh, hi, Leanna.
Leanna is, her screen's off, but I'm sure she's listening. Leanna, you did an awesome job. Those are two really minor things.
She did.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, that's it for that one. The last one is just because it kind of raises a red flag if it says no vote needed. We'll rephrase it differently. Okay. So, should we move to voting? I had a lot of comments, but anybody else?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So all those in favor of approving the minutes of December 6th, please say... Oh, I guess I have to do a roll call. Colleen?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Okay, Nikki, aye. And we are missing Beth tonight. Not because she doesn't want to be here, because she has family from out of the country visiting. And I told her that that was more important. Okay, so the minutes are approved for tonight. Okay, public participation or announcements? We have none. Okay. Moving on to the administrative report.
All right, I will share my screen and we'll get started. I should unmute myself too, that would be helpful. All right, can you, are you able to see it?
We can see it.
All right, perfect. To start with, I wanted to highlight some of the, you know, it's, it seems like even though it's been a month, that it's been very quick since the last time we've met because we've got, we had break in there. But before we went on break, we had a couple really fantastic concerts. Really fantastic. The first two images are from the concerts that we had. This third image was from a kindergarten classroom, Emily Fugue's room. They were, it was like a day or two before that snow day where they were all really, really hoping for a snow day. So they were making a bunch of snowflakes in the off chance that we had one.
And it was a good call, I might say.
It was your very good call. Good job.
It was, right? It was, it was, and Christine, it was a good call. You're right.
It was necessary.
Yep. The, the first image on this one was, I was in, this is first grade, and they were playing this awesome snowball game where you had to get the little balls over on the other side. Oh, it was great. It was great. The one in the middle is a dear friend of mine who loves trains and loves puzzles. So we were playing some trains. And the third image, we had Woodstock High School. It's hard to see, but that's Cody Tancredi. And there was actually, oh, the name is escaping me. He was a former Heartland student who's currently a Woodstock. Yes, yes, thank you. They came and spoke to the students. It was, it was great. They had a really great time. And I wanted to, in December, we asked for a compost update. So I reached out to the sixth grade team before break, getting their thoughts on a more formal update for this month. And they had, actually, they had asked that I come to the board and just say that they're currently collecting data and that they wanted a little bit more time to come with a more formal presentation for February. So they'll be ready for that in February. But I did include some pictures of the work that they've been doing so far this year.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I know. And I like data.
Yep, exactly. I figured that would be a good one. All right, and now we've got our student presentation. Once I get this going, I'll put it up. Are you able to see this one loading too, or no, because I only shared a tab?
We cannot see it.
You cannot? Okay, let me fix it. That's the downside of sharing a tab, I think. When it opens a new tab. Here we go. Stop. All right, let's try again. There. I can see it. You can? Christine, can you see it there?
All the way up and look at us. All the way up in front of the screen.
I don't know if they can hear me. Can you hear me there? Alina, can you hear me? Or Michael?
I can hear you in the Shire.
I know that background's great. I was gonna say that earlier. Nikki, can you hear me?
I can.
There you go.
I can hear you. Maybe you can't hear me.
I'm unsure if they can hear or not.
Well, she can't hear us. Lindsay can't hear us. Hold on, let me text Lindsay.
Maybe they're, are they going?
I think they're taking selfies of each other.
They might be. I don't know. Christine, can you hear us? Oh, you can? Oh, okay. We are not sure over here. All right, so I'll put it back on the right screen. We can't hear you, though.
Right.
I see the CATV icon muted on our end.
Oh, was that what that little...
Interesting. Oh, on this?
There's the little message on the screen.
It's okay.
Here, do you want to try this one, right?
Sure.
That's no idea.
There was a tag, girl?
It wasn't. The mic isn't working.
Okay. Okay, so Nikki, what I'll do, and maybe just give me, Christine, I can see your face pretty clearly. Give me a thumbs up. What I'll just do is, I'll go to that screen. Even though we can't hear you, I'll just put the screen. The only trouble is I won't know when to change screens. Like to change slides.
They should be able to raise their hands still.
Oh, hold on, one second.
Yeah, I don't know if they can't hear you.
Hi.
We're just, we're just working it out.
Do you want me, what does it make most sense for me to stop sharing my screen and have you share your screen?
We can try that.
I just wonder, because I won't, like, if they want to be able to keep going, then I won't, I won't know.
Technology is great.
We need to get the mic working anyway, though.
Yes, I can hear it. We should be good to go. That was strange. Okay. All right, let's try again and we will get going.
Good job, girls. Just gave you a little, a few minutes to prepare some more.
That's right. Or let your people take pictures of you.
That was me.
Go for it.
You're up.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie.
I'm Cora.
And we'd like to show you and get opinions on our idea for a mural we'd like to create for the front of our school.
Cool.
So, we would like to...
Our idea, we would like to put a mural in front of the school. This mural will be on an eight by four piece of plywood. It will be placed on the brick wall next to the entrance. It will depict a tree showing unity and diversity. We will use the handprints of all the students currently attending the school as leaves, whichever color they choose. This will show the individuality and diversity of our school. So, this is... So this is like... One of the things, one of the...
She's got...
There it is.
Okay, so this is our sketch. So, we have handprints. Clearly, most of the students will have fingers, unlike him who's drawn. So, there, we're gonna, you can see the word up going to the trunk and the white background. And so we'll stain the trunk. So, next slide. So, the plan, we will paint the eight by four plywood in white for the background, with the exception of the tree trunk, which we'll later paint over with stain. The leaves of the tree will be made up by handprints of every student currently attending Heartland in any color they're choosing that isn't the color of the tree or the color of the background. Before we apply the stain to the tree trunk, we will etch in the words. The words will represent our school's values and show the illusion of tree bark. To get the words, we'll go around every class and ask each student or each class to decide later for words they think will represent our school. We will put together all the words, deleting repeats, and those words will, and values will make up for the bark of our tree. We're still working on like, the technicalities of how we're gonna collect all the words. And then, we want to try to incorporate the staff into the mural, but we're not entirely sure how. We were thinking of like, roots as an idea with like, those staff handprints, but... We're not really sure how we want to incorporate them.
I'm saying that suggested footprints.
So, the process, we need to sketch our, put our sketch on the plywood. We need to draw the trunk and the branches. And then we're gonna survey students to get the words. Then we need to etch the words with a wood etcher on the trunk. And then we're gonna stain the trunk and branches. We need to get handprints. And we can have students like, come into the STEM lab and have, like, each class do it at once. And then coat the top coat so it, so it like, is protected from the weather when we put it outside. And then install it. Next. So, materials needed. And so, these are the materials needed and costs. So acrylic paint is a steam-up supplied. We need an eight by four piece of plywood, which we have, but it's steam-up supplied for $45. And a wood etcher, which is a steam-up tool, and it's $25. We need WISAT, wood stain, which is provided by Wiscan. And the wood protection is also provided by Wiscan. Steam-up general supply fund. Next slide.
Christine, sorry, you're muted on your end again. Do you want me to move to the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, I'll stay unmuted, but I won't be able to see anyone.
And then, this is what we've already done. So we already have approval from Mr. Stanford. Stanford wants to put the mural out front. And we have leftover money from the Unity and Diversity Grant that we can use for materials. And we already have the plywood. Next slide.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. We hope you consider our project. Can you do next slide? There's a sketch again.
One more slide.
Can you go again, Lindsay?
You got the thumbs up, Lindsay.
Perfect, thank you. I'll stop presenting. I think that was the end.
That was really great. Did you, like, how did you guys come up with the idea?
So, for a project and students as I learn.
Nikki, Christine, do you want me to keep going? We can't hear you on our end. Do you want me to keep going with the administrative presentation?
You guys, you guys have to speak up.
Well, I think if she can't hear me, there's something... What did you do last time to make it work?
We just tried the same thing. It's no worse. It's picking you up.
Oh, it is? Can you? But you still can't hear us, Lindsay. Lindsay, can you hear? Can you hear us, Lindsay?
Oh, it might be on. Anybody else? It should be on the...
Michael, can you hear us?
Nope.
Nope.
Type in the chat, type in the chat.
We had to say hello, Zoe. They're all...
Everyone's confused. I know.
No, Christine, I don't know if you can hear us, but we cannot hear you.
We can hear you.
I think like, Michael and I and Alina and Colleen can probably hear each other, but we, none of us can hear any of you there.
So it's on the mic.
Do you want me, Christine, to continue the administrative report or pause? I'm good either way.
Yeah, so we have a few... Just, is it, it's not muted on your computer, is it? Is that, okay.
It affects it. It's just very quiet.
Yeah, we've got... I have this, though. We might try.
So you guys came up with the idea? So... Can Christine unmute?
Something looks different, at least. The box on CATV was turning blue. Like, maybe that was working, but we still couldn't hear anything.
Oh, they were already muted.
Oh. Right there.
Oh, now we can hear you.
Yep.
I wonder if somebody rushed against it, or who knows? Okay, all right, we're back.
Continue on, we will. Are you good, Nikki, for me to keep going?
Yes, we are good.
Perfect.
And we learned that the students wanted to do a project that had art and created a positive impact. And so that was how they came up with this project, so it's very exciting.
I love it.
Thank you, guys. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you both. It was wonderful.
Yeah.
Well done.
You're gonna go in the library. Library, perfect. I'll text, I'll text Data and Jay to let them know that you're done, okay?
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Okay, Lindsay, back to you.
We'll keep going. Christine, you good to see it on your end now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to provide you all with a winter activities update. Some of the numbers shifted slightly, not too much. But this is what we've got, a good amount of skiing, which is great. We were especially excited with the skiing, swimming, and bowling numbers. Especially the bowling, from what Linda had described to me, was that that was a really big increase from previous years, which is really, really exciting. And next, couple of events. Winter activities will begin next Wednesday, 1/11. And then the 16th, we don't have any school. So not a ton in terms of after-schooly type events currently, but we've got some good stuff coming up in the soon-ish future. And I wanted to provide you, these are updated, so they look similar to last month, but they are updated. Last month, I think there was about 15 responses. This time, there's 30 responses, which is great.
Wow.
Yeah, yep. So 56% of the people were in favor of Heartland School versus Heartland Elementary School. Just the breakdown of the types of people that were responding. Largely parent guardians, some community members, and also some alumni. Some of these, they could choose more than one option if they were a parent who was also an alumni.
I was like, how are you? 29...
Yeah, yep. So yeah, if somebody was more than one thing, we gave them the way to choose both. And what I did, it looks like it cuts off quickly, but from the last board meeting, that very top comment that ends with students, school students, a little bit younger, that was from last month. That's the only reason why it's cut off. So everything from leave as is down are the updated comments.
Back to the limited resources.
Yeah, here are some people who are not in favor. Except for the last one.
And Christine, I don't know, I can't see. I know that she had to step out at 6:30. Is she still in the room?
I'm still here. I'll quickly give my report.
Oh, yeah.
I've got a meeting, the Weathersfield Select Board meeting, to talk about the...
She's still there.
Oh, she is, okay. I will let her take it away, then.
Can you hear us? Lindsay, can you hear us?
Unless, Christine, unless you'd like me to do it, I'm good. Whatever you, whatever you need to do. Unless, Christine, unless you'd like me to do it, I'm good. Whatever you, whatever you need to do.
So bizarre. Advance the slide.
CATV is muted again.
Christine, can you just unmute yourself on your computer?
Uh, yes, Michael. Lindsay, can you advance the slide?
Yep.
Okay. It's okay. I'm gonna talk because I have to zip out briefly and then I'll be back. But this is like, I'll pick it up on the recorder.
Yeah, I know it.
Can you, can you mute? Can you mute the mic and I'll open my mic? I'll talk on that mic. Yeah, see if that works for a minute. Okay.
And then, Christine, that was the end of your report. Are you good?
Okay, uh. Lindsay? Yes. I didn't give it yet. Can you go back?
Oh, sorry. I'll go back. There you go. Lindsay, go forward one.
Is asking for, one of the things they're asking for with any new program is adequate professional development. So we know that's really important and that's on our radar to make sure they get that and have the time for that. We are beginning an ELA pilot. Teachers that want to participate are going to participate. It's, we've been reaching out to programs. We've landed on Amplify CKLA and I meant to write down what that stands for. Amplify CKLA. Uh, it's something language arts. Anyway, the, the middle level is Amplify at ELA. Core knowledge, core knowledge, language arts. And so some of the pilot members have had experience with that program and they're gonna pilot it over the next couple of months. We're using title carryover money to pay for it. So we're trying to take advantage of that.
Greatness.
Yeah. So we're pretty excited about that and that's gonna start shortly and then I'll keep you updated on that. The only other thing I wanted to give as my, part of my report is the quarterlies. And I'm gonna ask Lindsay to, I need to share my screen.
She can't hear you.
Lindsay, can you unshare your screen?
Absolutely.
Hey, we're pivoting. We do this well. We do this. We have to. So.
I know, does Mr. Lutz live in a hobbit house?
He's in a hobbit hole.
Is that his wheelbarrow? I mean, like, he looks so, like, natural. Normally there's a little fuzz around, so.
Um, so, so it's January. Boy, you can't really see those very well. These are in the portal, the quarterly report, so you can see them. We are on, on track. So we're in the black. And of course, these are just projections, but as of now, things look pretty good.
Great, good watching.
Yeah, so.
Great.
Yep, and I'm gonna step out. I'm gonna leave this here, recording.
Okay.
Take this in the other room and I'll be back. Hopefully, all the tech issues will be solved by then.
Uh, in the meantime, I think I'll join the meeting. Do you have to let me in or? You shouldn't, because if I go to the studio.
You shouldn't have to.
I have to find this.
Christine, I'm not sure where you're at. Do you want me to keep going or wait?
So you stopped sharing. You can take over again.
Does she have more?
She has the budget. Can we talk to Michael Lutz about his background?
Thank you, Nikki. All right, I will reshare my screen. Alina, maybe if you don't mind, if there's like hints kind of doing these one of things, if we can't hear, just unmute and let me know. Does that work, you or Michael?
I'd be happy to.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Hi.
Hi.
I just decided we're gonna call you.
That's fine. It will just put you on speaker and up high.
Yep.
And I called Christine today and I was like, oh Christine, you know, I feel like the weather's actually great. I feel like I should just call you.
Lindsay, do you know that none of us can hear you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, here we are.
I think we got it.
Oh, we think we got it.
We think we got it.
Okay. Well, here, I'm gonna mute my phone and see if you can hear me.
Okay, well, I need to do something really quick.
Oh, okay.
Okay, he's gonna need to do something really quick.
Where did the mouse go?
The incident echo.
It's in the middle.
We'll see how this goes.
Oh my gosh.
Okay. Where is audio? Or where's the three key to? Yeah, I can't see it at all.
Alina, Michael, we're just troubleshooting.
Michael, I talked to his background yet?
My.
It's the hat.
We communicate with him. Michael communicates with us, but he doesn't know that we're talking to him. Oh, wait, but Lindsay, we want to hear about Michael's background. So you ask Michael to tell us about his background.
Hey, Michael, while we're waiting, can you tell us about your background?
Not like your professional background.
Yeah, no, like the actual, the actual what's behind you. Yeah, the, yeah, the actual behind you background.
Can you hear us now?
We can hear him.
Can you guys hear us?
Okay, but we can't hear Michael.
You can hear me.
Yes, yes.
We can hear you guys now, yeah.
Michael is muted.
Yeah, it's one of the backgrounds you can pick. It's from Lord of the Rings.
Oh, that's great.
We recognize the hobbit house, but where did you get it? It looks so realistic.
So it was under one of the options here that you can pick on Google.
But it's not fuzzy like around your head like most of them are. That's why.
That's because my head shines all the light off of it, so it makes it easier for other things to look better.
That is some Middle Earth magic is going on.
That's right.
Oh goodness, okay.
Okay, we're back up.
All right, we are good. And Nikki, can you just confirm for me that you see the right slide? Talks about budget questions?
I see budget questions from last month.
Beautiful, okay. So last one, there was a question under where flooring fall, fell under, so I asked Ed and that does fall under the maintenance category. There was a question about the algebra breasts. That does fall under the SU assessments part of our budget, so that is covered within that. And I did include high school tuition in the FY24 budget presentation, which I think, if I remember, yep, is the next slide. So I will just stop sharing this one and share another screen. Okay.
Yeah, we're.
We're.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, just for, thank you. Heather's clarifying that we're now on items for discussion. So we're gonna switch the community survey and the budget discussion.
Didn't we do the community survey?
Because we already talked about the.
Is that the name?
Yes.
Well, there's that, but then there was also, we talked about, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Yeah, see?
The survey about the survey.
Yeah. So, okay, go for it, Lindsay.
So if it's all right with you, Nikki, and the rest of the board, what this is, I'll just slide back one. This is the same presentation from last month, but I've skipped to the slide that has the most recent updates. So this is a screenshot from the spreadsheet that I sent to you earlier today, the FY24 Heartland Comparative Budget Report. So here is a screenshot from this. Do you want me to run through the screenshots and then we have a discussion, Nikki? What, what is the best way you'd like me to do this?
Yeah, I think we'll run through.
There's just a.
And I have the, I have the Excel spreadsheet open too, over here.
Yep, there's, yeah, there's just a lot to it. I think the, probably.
Overview to get people's heads back in the game and then.
Yep.
We can ask specific questions. Does that sound good to you guys?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the overall biggest plus side that we have right now is that we'll, we'll be able to potentially be able to utilize a four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-nineteen surplus, which was from FY22, which could, could potentially be a really positive impact on the budget. So that's where Ed has outlined for us in this image. The first, or the second, I should say, group where it has homestead property valuation impact, no surplus, that's without using it. The one below it is using that entire four-twenty-nine-three-nineteen surplus. And down below that last group there, last month, you had asked for what that might look like on the tax rate to cut a variety of different amounts of dollars. So right there is ten thousand, fifteen, twenty-five, fifty, and one hundred. And I think if I remember right, the next slide, oh no, there's, do you want me to pause here, Nikki, or go through the rest of these?
Yeah, what do you guys want?
We were just saying that like, you know, the difference between cutting ten thousand dollars and cutting a hundred thousand dollars is not gigantic.
It's not gigantic, I mean.
Nope. It seems like it would be helpful to kind of, yeah, get to the end.
Yeah.
And look at the, look at the increase and the tax rate increase and then start going back to this.
Yep, keep going, Lindsay.
Yep, that sounds like a plan. So this is from FY19 through FY24 comparative numbers and what it looks like, general budget numbers, homestead, equalized pupil, CLA, and the homestead tax rate. And some of these, depending on the screenshot, have similar items in both, but I just wanted to include everything for you, even if it was repeated. And this is FY16 through 24. And this was from that first screenshot that I sent you and what that might look like if you want us to cut certain amounts. So if you wanted us to cut around ten thousand dollars, that would likely come somewhere out of supplies. Ed and I felt that anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars could come out of the health reimbursement account. And from FY22, the budgeted amount that we had was one thousand forty-four-five-hundred, but our actual was one twenty-one-eight-eleven. And so Ed felt comfortable with taking that from there if the ask for us is to cut that amount. Somewhere around fifty thousand dollars, what we would do is we would remove the anticipated work. There's some main entrance work, some specifically with some doors and something, a few other things on the main entrance, as well as potentially new floors that we have discussed within previous months, going from the main doors to the slate foyer. Those would be removed from the budget. And if we're thinking around a hundred thousand dollars, that's a teaching position with benefits and wages. And I think, yep, the next one is tuition. What we have for the FY23 budget was two million nine hundred fifty-one for ten. We're budgeting for FY24, three million nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. And I think that was, that's the end of the updates. Do you want me to stop showing my screen, Nikki, and then we can have a further discussion from there?
Um, right, because you can't see when you're sharing your screen.
I cannot, but if you want me to keep my screen up, you can tell me to share something else. I'm fine with that.
No, you know what? I'll, I can join the meeting and then I can share the spreadsheet from this computer.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, Nikki. I can share it, it's fine.
No, but I can see you. But if, I can see you. It doesn't impact my ability to see people.
Okay.
If I joined from my laptop. Okay, so. Okay, so I'm gonna share.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if I can, I don't know if it can carry over. Okay. Can I ask a question, Lindsay?
Yep.
Okay, so my question is, is so we've got this surplus of like, we're just gonna call it a half a million dollars. Can you break up surpluses over two years? Meaning, we use half of the surplus for the next year and then I know that there's a year coming up that like you guys were calling it the cliff year, where like all that, can you use the second half there to sort of like cushion that?
You can't carry over surplus. We can, we can put, we can split it into capital reserve and using the surplus.
Yep.
But we can't stash it.
Could you, what happens when it becomes capital reserve? Can you then pull from that at some point?
You can pull for capital projects.
But not.
For capital, so operating.
But not for other things.
For operating.
So it could, so like, can you give me an example of what a capital project could be?
Like doors and floors.
Okay, so.
Like, like facilities.
So, I'm just trying to think creatively if there's like options. So would it make sense to put some of the surplus into like a capital fund, like the floors and the doors and the other sorts of things, and put that off for just one year? Just so, I don't know. I don't know. I was just, some ideas.
Yeah. No, I think that that's an interesting idea. I just wanna go back to the big picture for a second. Our, oh, sorry, yeah, you guys are seeing me like as I flip through all the spreadsheets, but our budget is going up by a little less than six percent?
Correct.
Is that with the surplus or without the surplus?
Uh, is that with the surplus or without the surplus?
Without. That's the, that's just the, our, you know, what we're saying is our total operating cost for next year, not that number. For FY24.
That's not.
I don't feel like that's a big.
Yeah, in a high inflation year, that's a striking. I don't feel like that's out of control spending. And that's where, like, I wanna stop right there and like, because when you look at the tax scenarios, it's profits. So I, I just, we are in an inflation year and we had agreed upon salary and benefits increases that were part of our negotiated package. And other than that, we're making no programming changes except for talking about replacing the floors. And it's causing that dramatic of an impact on our taxes, is what.
Correct, yep.
As our equalized pupil count is down. Our equalized pupil count is down.
Right.
And our CLA was really bad.
And our CLA is, yeah.
I've gotta think the CLA impacts the entire state, but.
I know that, I don't think, Nikki, is Christine in the room right now?
No.
So I, I know that Christine and I had a conversation the other day because our C, can you scroll down a little bit for me? Is this where our CLA, or that, even at that?
No, I don't think so. Is it on here?
And might be, yeah, the eighty-one, the eighty-one point two-six. I know triggers for the town of Heartland, a, a, gosh, the, escaping me. Thank you. A reappraisal. And Christine was talking to Dave Ormison the other day and he had mentioned that there were many, many towns through the state of Vermont that were facing the same thing. And there just is a shortage of appraisers through the state. So we're, we're not alone in, by, by our CLA. So we're, we're not alone in, by, by our CLA needing to be reappraised.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Tax rate, so yeah, the homestead tax rate changes.
So. Yeah, so our homestead tax rate goes, is a 12% increase, even though we're.
Budget is only a 6% increase.
Right.
And it's, it's all about the equalized.
Yeah.
People count, I mean, the end of CLA, I think, but.
Yeah, I think the CLA has a lot.
If we're, I mean, we've lost 29 students. Is that, was I remembering that correctly?
Well, for last year.
CT change, count change.
Yeah.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that in a couple of weeks, we are due to have two new students begin with us, which is great. And actually, just this evening, I got another email that there are two additional students. I don't know a timeline on that, but you know, in the near future, that's a plus for students that are joining us very shortly.
How did we lose? Oh, we didn't lose them, that's the equalized people.
It's the equalized.
All this year.
Right.
Right.
Over the three, it's the average of the three years.
Okay.
Okay.
So I mean, I think we've got to apply some of the surplus to it.
I feel like we have to apply the whole surplus.
Yeah. But. Colleen, you got any opinions? When she finished working?
I guess I'm seeing kind of what makes sense for what's been happening in the last couple of years, inflation.
Yeah.
That 6% doesn't sound so bad. I did have a question about the FY, are FY 24 numbers in here?
Which spreadsheet do you want?
This one, the, are those numbers real or estimates?
Those are as real as 30th of December.
I mean, that's the budget that we would have to vote on if we voted today.
Correct, yep.
Yep.
And the state's not going to change these numbers again?
Not that we're aware of in this moment.
Okay.
I mean, the one, as I look at the budget, the one question I have, for me anyways, is the flooring and whether it's the right year to do the flooring or we should, you know, or if that's something we could wait on. I don't know. Sorry, she's going home with you?
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll pick her up or not, we'll get her.
Right, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, everybody, child, child arrangements. Yeah, that would, I mean, that would be my only thing.
Yeah, and then if we go to the tax scenarios, that would have an impact of 0.2%. Well, put 3%. How about the doors, like the floors and the doors? What is the door project?
Are we trying to, what are we trying to reduce costs for? The impact on town meeting?
Yeah, the impact on taxes.
Yep.
Lindsay, what is the door project?
I spoke to Jim Taft about that yesterday. I said, I feel like the board's going to ask about what this door project is all about. And his response to me was, he felt comfortable waiting another year. That, you know, so if that's something that we want to pause on one year, he felt comfortable doing that.
Is it something we're going to keep pushing off more and more and more, especially as?
I mean, we have, that's why I'm asking about.
I know.
Something that we, you know, when, when we'd had enough incidences, we were, we, we had a high level of concern about security.
Is the door, is the door project a security project or is it?
Oh. It, it seemed somewhat of it, he wasn't completely clear on what that would look like. He, his quick response to me was, it can wait another year.
Well, I guess we find out about that then.
Yep, so do you want me to come back to you? Do you want me to do that for February or do you want it more? I can try to, if you, I can try to call him now if that is more helpful for us in this moment.
I kind of want to know what it is because.
Yep.
Yeah, I do, I don't know that it makes a huge, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the total, the total estimated cost for that was, I think, somewhere, I think I have it written in one of the slides, but somewhere around $16,000 total for the doors.
Not huge.
But the doors.
No.
You can bring that to 30. Because that already, 32,000, so.
Took off the doors and floors.
We're now, you know, we're like almost at 0.75% if you shoot from the middle.
If you shoot, yeah.
We're like 0.255.
Nikki, would you like me to call Jim now really quick? I can mute myself and call him.
Yeah, we can all keep talking.
Yep, okay.
I really wish I understood how the CLA was impacting everybody. Because if we're all at 80%, right.
Yeah. That's a big difference from two years ago.
I, like, looking at our numbers, I feel like it's either the equalized people that's hammering us or the CLA, or they're both hammering us.
Yeah.
And I think it's a combination.
And there's some, and with the equalized people, there are some like cliffs is my, is my, we're not, we're not getting the penalty though.
We're not getting penalties.
We're not getting the excess spending penalties, that's good.
Still a 6% increase, but somehow miraculously it turns into 12.
Right. That's, well.
That's the same funding formula for us.
It's like this magic.
It's divided by fewer students. So the per pupil's cost goes up and that's what causes that.
Was our per pupil, or our per pupil increase was only 52%? Oh, wait, no.
No, it's, um.
Do we have, we don't have the per pupil.
No, it's now, are you equalized people?
Oh, no, our per pupil, our per pupil spending is the, the, that would be, I mean, we can try to do that math right now.
I can do that right now.
Okay. I'll let you do, I'll let you do it, you're better than I am. It's interesting to tie the, the budget by the numbers of equalized peoples.
Oh, uh.
All right, Nikki, do you want my update from Jim Taft?
Oh, yeah, that was fast.
He's quick, he's good. So he said it is not a security update, it is cosmetic in replacing the doors. He has no security concerns, so it has nothing to do with security, more cosmetic.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, from that sweet, that's the doors and sweet new entrance that those girls have proposed.
I know, we're.
Nobody's got to look at the doors.
Okay, um, maybe they can paint the doors too. I guess I'm going to others versus.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, wow, that's a huge change. Yeah, so that's the jump right there.
Right, right where?
21,000 to 24,000?
Yeah, and that's equal, that's just the drop in equalized people, so that's all that is. No, I mean, we, you know, this is the thing that we, we've been, you know, we've been talking about, and it's catching up with us.
Right.
And we didn't want to make any staffing changes this year.
Yeah.
So the only, you know, the only place we can go is some of these other things that are outside of.
Yeah.
So should we move to talk about removing flooring and doors in this budget?
Yeah, I, yeah, we can talk about that, it just doesn't make a difference. Like, we could remove all the floors and doors we want. It will make a 19.57.
Right, I mean, we really should be like, like, like cutting.
Um, these numbers are scary. Okay. I mean, Lindsay, what's your, what's your feeling about it?
I think if the board is interested in making a cut that is, that feels more significant. So this year, I know that the, the board, the 516 last year came to the board and had a conversation around a model where there would be, it's one classroom that right now are current fifth graders, is one classroom of students. They came to you last year discussing the possibility of having two certified staff. It would depend in the moment of which staff member was the classroom teacher and which was the interventionist at the time. I would feel comfortable not hiring that person. Right now, it is currently, that person's not hired due to other personnel related things that have happened. That plan has not been put into place. So I would feel comfortable not hiring that person, which would eliminate around $100,000 with benefits and salary from the budget.
Would though, like, because that, as that class keeps moving, right? Don't, at some point, don't we have to replace this position at this moment? Like, wouldn't we have to replace it at some point?
The group next year would be sixth graders. And then what, what that would end up likely meaning are, is some conversations with the staff in-house around what that's going to look like for a 6, 7, 8, which is the SU's middle level model. So it would, I don't think in this moment, we would need to replace that person because it would just require a conversation with our 6, 7, and 8th grade team around what that might look like.
So I know that they're revamping the education quality standards, but the previous education quality standards that we hired to rearrange to try and fix is that our 6, 7, 8 team was teaching over 100 kids, which was beyond the education quality standards. Do we know where we would be next year? Like, do we have that class list?
Yes, it might take me a minute, Nikki, but I can find it. Give me like 30 seconds and I can find what the to, are you looking for the total number of students 6, 7, and 8 added together for next year?
Yeah.
Yep, give me like 30 seconds and I can find that.
Okay.
The sixth grader, seventh grader, eighth, eighth graders. So 12, 13, but it'll be next year's, so it'll be.
Right.
This year's, fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Exactly, yeah.
So it would be, um.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be under.
That's going to be under.
It's going to easily be under, say, 35, 35, and a little 15, right?
Yeah.
So 70.
Is the current sixth grade still like 40 students or is it more?
Yeah, it's still, it's quite large.
The sixth grade is the biggest one.
The sixth grade is large. But the, the seventh grade.
Nikki.
Everybody's running numbers.
Nikki, it would be a total of 79 students for next year's 6th, 7th, and 8th grade.
That's okay. That's the right size, otherwise, okay. Can we just go through, do you have the list right in front of you?
Of.
Of numbers for each class?
Yep, I can give you that. You want starting from first grade, Nikki, is that what I'm seeing? Or K, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just think visually I'd want to have.
Are you doing K for next year?
This is, you can give me this year's K and I'll just change it.
That's fine, and I, what I will note with K, I'm just, what I'm doing, my quickest way to access it is through Power School, which is our student information system. We have a number of 41, but that 41 number does include some students from other communities because we house the TK program. So I just wanted to, to make sure that you knew that.
Yeah, so, okay, we'll write 41 and we'll adjust that in a minute.
Yep, uh, first grade is 30. Second grade is 23. Third grade is 24. Fourth grade is 24. Fifth grade is 15. Sixth grade is 37. Seventh grade is 27.
Okay, we don't need 8th grade.
Correct, yep.
We're not going to a problem unless there are all those kindergarten kids.
Okay, so we can subtract.
We subtract 5.
So 36, so 36 kindergarten.
Okay.
So we're, is 100 the magic number?
It was, those are being edited, but I will say like our staff, when the staff started managing 100 kids, they stressed.
You guys were miserable.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's too many.
And you could see it.
Yeah.
And feel it. And so I do think, I think there's a reason maybe they set 100 as the threshold, that that's too much.
So even if we, even if we said 90, I mean, and you lump these kids together and you go through by three, I mean, you're not, you're not over 90 until the kindergartners of all 36 of them stay around.
And if we have huge classes coming behind them, we probably won't.
But I mean, even if you do, things are going to change anyways.
Right.
And, I mean, that's a lot of years to change.
Yeah, I mean, it gets us three, three or four years to get to a very safe place.
Yeah.
Nikki, I don't know if this has helped or not, but just today I got, had a projected for kindergarten next year and it was 20.
Ooh, that's low.
That's as of right now, you know, there, there could very easily be more, we're early, but that was a number I was given today.
I'm going to do 25. Does that kind of, I mean, we've been averaging actually higher, 36, 30, 23. Okay, okay, so that gives us that, so 6, 8. Okay, so 79 kids. I think that feels good. Colleen, I want you in the room, speak. Um, she's out of.
I'll come back, I promise.
But does that, like, how are you feeling about this?
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead. Well, like, are we allowed to ask Michael how he might feel about like the number?
Yes, we definitely.
Michael, can I ask you how you feel? Like, does 79, does 85 feel manageable? Like, what is the number that, you know, 100, we've decided definitely doesn't, but like, you know, we're not even going to be.
You know, I probably have a very biased opinion because I came from a school where I taught 185 students in one year. So, uh, you know.
That can feel stressful.
Yeah, so, you know, when I, when I look at these numbers, you know, honestly, if, if you're looking at a classroom and you have 20 to 25 students, so that literally, and with 7th and 8th grade as we split those, you know, there's no reason why 100 and, really even probably 110 is still safe. Because remember in 7th and 8th grade, they split and eventually we're hoping to have this be a little bit more of a piecemealing effect happen hopefully in the future. So the numbers aren't that large at all, they're actually quite small, in my opinion. Because even with that class of 37 students, they're not all going to be in one classroom in 7th and 8th grade. And even in 6th grade, they're not in one classroom. You only have 13, what is it, you have like 18 in one and maybe 16 or 19 in the other. So it's not a ton of students. But again, I, I used to teach 38 students at one time and I was by myself, so I.
Can I, yeah, so taking that and thinking about when they move into the lab in the library, right? 20 is a lot of students.
Yes.
In that space to do what we're trying to do. So I think when, when we talk about moving it to 20 would be the absolute cap. I mean, I would put all of the 6th grade in there.
Yes.
And we have to use the entire library in spread, I mean, and when I'm trying to do the mini lesson, or we, we are literally.
Yeah.
So that makes it part, I mean, there's, so it depends, that, it just depends.
So you, you're doing entire grades when you're doing your lessons?
Well, so the sixth grade, we, um, there have been, because of my split between K-six and, or K-five and six, eight. Sixth grade, sometimes we take, because I only meet them once a week, so it's sort of all at once, and that, and that's the biggest space that we have to put them in order to do that. When we spread out, it's, it's very effective. So it's just that, it's manageable, but I wouldn't wanna do that all day long, neither would I. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little uncomfortable, but for the fifteen minutes that we need to spend, we can do it. But, you know, like I said, twenty is sort of that max, because then you think about, if you have to double class to do those kinds of lessons, because you're collaborating and you're doing those, correct, problem-solving PBL things, um, yeah. We just wanna be mindful of that.
Yeah.
That's my only input.
And there, there may be ways with scheduling too, to, to think about, you know.
Yeah.
How to manage that. Well, because right now, six, seven, eight is kind of like six different classes that are all running.
That's correct, Nikki. Our two sixth-grade teachers are, they were integrating with seven, eight in some aspects of the day, but in terms of the curriculum academic parts of the sixth-grade day, it is two core teachers. That, that do not include that seven, eight team at the moment. The hope, um, and the, the move forward with the SU's vision of a six, eight middle level is to include sixth grade into the more instructional aspects of the day of what is currently right now just seven and eight.
So, I mean, that's what we would be doing, when, if we, if we did this, we would have to do that. So, push some more on that. It's almost like a transitional period where you have, instead of six classes, all of a sudden, in six, seven, eight, you only have, you go from like four and seven, eight to five, because we've got a micro-class.
And then at some point, it'll go six.
And then you, it'll back up to six. Obviously, that will require some moving around to below to make that work. Um, although I suppose it was always going to require some moving around to make that work when we got, when they came up through. Um, but I just wanna make sure that that won't be disruptive to, um, you know, to anybody who's there now, or you don't have any concerns about that.
No.
Well, I think that that, so that takes.
That would be, yeah, wages and benefits would be about a hundred thousand.
Yeah. I can't run those numbers though.
If you pull up one of Ed's, right, one of Ed's, um, that first, yep, it might be that one. Yep, down there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a hundred, so that would take off, it would get the tax rate down to one point eight eight, and it's, it's almost a two percent change in the tax rate.
Yeah.
Do they have any staff changes? Do they have any staff changes right now?
Are you guys running more numbers?
Not really, I'm just staring at them.
You're just staring?
Looking at them, and we're gonna magically do something that we are like, yes, that was great.
Okay, so equalize FY twenty-three, equalize people's, but maybe we ran that number somewhere. Is that here? Oh, but that's the way you did it. Are we about saying over there like?
Sorry, we were just talking about the, that, you know, like, ten million dollars for a school budget is not, like,
No.
that, that just doesn't feel crazy to me in any way. Um.
Okay.
So, if we apply the surplus, there's some. Oh, yeah, if we do apply the surplus, and we take out the ten thousand dollars.
Hundred.
A hundred thousand, sorry. So, could we call that like, six hundred thousand dollars now, a little rounding up, of like, added money in there?
Surplus.
Surplus is twenty-nine. So the five twenty-nine surplus, oh, the four twenty-nine surplus, plus the hundred thousand, plus the hundred thousand.
Five twenty-nine.
Right. So, you know, add that back.
Who was the surplus again, four?
Four twenty-nine, three eighteen. Why was that so?
Okay, so that's where that number came from. Oh, so with the surplus, we're going up, but that's with this, okay. Uh, so then I'm gonna subtract. Okay, so that's a twelve percent increase for equalized people if we go with, uh, taking away a hundred thousand dollars versus thirteen. So we're getting one point two percent fallback.
It's not, I mean, it's not much.
Sounds like nothing, right? It's like, it's not that big, it changes, and the changes are big, and.
I mean. I think we keep our budget pretty tight. We're talking about scraping a hundred thousand dollars off, which is significant, but it's not, not millions.
No.
Um, there, there's just not a lot of room.
There's, yeah, but I would say that, I mean, it's our responsibility to make the school as strong as possible for as cost-effective as possible, and I.
Absolutely.
I feel like we're kind of there.
Well, when we approved the five, the five-six staffing plan, you know, part of that discussion was, as this group moves into the middle school.
Right.
This position will have to be taken away. So, I mean, so I think that is, you know, that was always something that was gonna happen, it just, it, you know.
It's happening a year sooner.
It's happening a year before we had.
Partially because our middle school expanded by a year, too. Because before, our middle school was five-six.
That's right, so we couldn't have done it before.
Yeah.
You're right, I believe, Michael might be able to speak to more to the date, but I'm trying to remember, I think it was the spring of this last school year was when that decision with the SU middle-level team was decided. So it would have been after we approved the budget last year.
Yeah, right. I mean, I, I guess my, my, uh, my outstanding question is just, you know, it sounds like one of the impacts on staff would be these slightly bigger groups in the middle school, especially for.
I mean, this is work around, so just don't, don't, but I just wanna be wary of it.
Yes, no, and I wanna, and I, I do wanna, I wanna understand sort of the, the impacts, even if they're not, you know.
Yeah.
Even if they're not killers, like, because all, all the little stresses add up and it, you know. Um, so it sounds like that's one. Are there, are there others, you know, that we should be aware of, is the, I don't know.
The only class, I mean, none of the other classes are even close to the sixth grade.
No, it's like.
Not even.
Eleonora's.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I mean, until kindergarten moves up, but that always changes, so.
Yeah. And we must be graduating a small class and adding a small class, because it didn't make much of a difference there either.
Yeah. The, do you want the current eighth grade, currently, on what I have is thirty-four?
Okay, so the current eighth grade is thirty-four, and so we must be graduating near that, in the twelfth grade.
Yeah, yeah, that's Judson's class, and they were, they've been a big, they've been a pretty big class all along, like thirty, they, they were like thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and they were here, so, I imagine, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so we need to give Lindsay marching orders. Okay, so for one, I wish we had Christine here, we need to vote on this.
Tonight?
Um, that was the goal, but I think given what we're talking about, we need to have a short special meeting, I think.
And have that.
Yeah.
Here.
It can be a really short meeting, though, it could just be Lindsay coming back with our changes and giving us final numbers.
So Nikki, then, would you like me to come back to the board with, and I, I think I'm understanding this correctly, you know, please tell me if I'm wrong, the, using the four hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred nineteen with an additional one hundred thousand dollars cut, and what would that look like in the budget? Am I right about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna throw in the doors and the floors, just see what that, like, what that would change to?
Well, we can run, I mean, we can run those numbers kind of on our own, like, what I want Lindsay, like, I want us to make the decisions now that she comes back with a budget and says, this is what it is.
Yeah.
And we say.
And then from there, you say yes or no?
Yeah. I don't wanna be, like, I wanna decide, because we can kind of hutz with this spreadsheet enough tonight to make, to understand.
Next year, next year is the year that we're gonna have the Title I class.
Right, can you talk about the Title I?
That is an important piece of this.
The, are you referring to the two, the two Title Interventionists that we have? So, we, we did not meet the forty percent threshold for what may, and what may qualify for Title I funding. As we sit here right now, we don't have the answers of what that might look like in a shakeout in terms of funding for the two interventionists that we have, so we don't know that at this point.
So we have those, and then we run out of S R funds, too.
That was the other thing, right, the S R funds.
Correct. Yes.
Next year, you guys are gonna be.
It's gonna be down next year. You guys.
You guys are gonna be, uh, I mean, I, I think we've gotta, we've gotta do something this year to, because otherwise, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a disaster next year.
It's gonna be worse next year.
It's gonna be worse, you're gonna have to cut existing staff positions.
Right. Well, even as it is next year, if we lose two Title, and I probably had two S R-funded positions as well.
That is correct, yep, there are two S R-funded positions.
So do, so I think doing this this year may save a job next year, like, that's not, you know.
Yeah.
I'm like, I, I think, so I think.
I mean, like, I just feel like the state's gonna have to.
I think it's the right thing to do, yeah.
I think we can't lose four staff in this building, it wouldn't function.
Right.
No.
Yeah.
So what?
Am I right, we have two S R-funded positions as well?
That's correct, yes.
And where those staff are teaching and intervention right now?
One is at the middle level, and the other, oh my goodness, I'm trying to remember where the other one is off the top of my head.
Are they intervention or are they core?
No, no, not intervention.
Yeah. That just seems like impossible.
We're gonna have to open the door for this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I do think getting, getting the budget down as much as we can without losing an existing staff position this year, then it gives us some more room next year, gives, gives a little more leeway next year, so that.
Right.
If the budget has to go up to cover some of those positions, it's not. I don't know, it's a, it's a tough one. It's mind-boggling, to be honest, like. We can't be the only four facing it, right? There, because there are S R-funded positions all over the state, and.
Right.
Um, there, you know, there may be some, this, this is probably something to be talking to our legislators about.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, do we?
That should be your conversation.
So. The other thing that we can do, how much is in our capital reserve account?
Is that within these documents or would, let me see. I don't think it is.
No. Okay, uh, Christine may know that, but she.
She might. So do you want me to come, I don't know what Christine's timeline is in coming back into this meeting, but do you want me to come back to the board, assuming she does not return, with what's in our capital reserve and what the budget would look like with the surplus included, minus a hundred thousand dollar cut?
Uh, yeah, I think right now, we're at, um, right now, we're at this budget, including the surplus.
Nikki, I'm not sure if you're talking, but I can't hear you.
Oh, no, it happened again.
It happened again.
Yeah, I'm right there.
It's happened again.
I think it's Christine. I think it's you.
I do see Christine is back, though. Hello, Christine, I can't see you. I also can't hear the voice and picture of C A T V is off. Is it because you walked through the door?
Yeah. Oh, no.
Oh, well, we're gonna be doing. Wrong thing.
I'm still recording, so it's okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay, we'll get this back in our.
Do you just wanna put in the chat that we, uh.
Christine has entered the building again.
Right.
The button that we wanna hit is to follow up the two buttons, and it's also the one that is the same color as the background, so that's a button.
Oh, that's handy. Okay, uh, Christine, turn it on. It's more like, a little smoother. Do you know how much is in the capital reserve?
Uh, last, it was like three, it was three hundred and something.
Really, I mean, we spent the whole, yeah. Have Lindsay come back with a hundred thousand dollar cut.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're back, yep.
Christine says.
Wait one second, folks. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm still sharing, too.
Can you hear?
Yeah. Can, can you hear us? Yes.
Yeah, they can hear us, I just need to get the stream back. Oh, for YouTube.
Oh.
Oh. It's something that we don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
One minute, thanks. It should still talk on, it's still going.
Yeah.
Amazing, great, fantastic.
Uh, no, that was the next question.
Okay, you're good to go.
Because right now, okay, okay. Yeah, so Christine just said that the capital reserve is around three hundred.
And something, I don't know exactly.
Thousand and something.
Three hundred thousand something, sorry, is that what you said, Christine?
Yeah.
So could we take off the doors and floors and use the capital reserve for that?
Yes, and so that, that was my question of what other things do we have in here that are capital? Um, the Black River Study is also capital.
Let's use it all.
Well, well, the capital has not grown at all.
It hasn't grown, and there are, we have had, you know, things go wrong, the H VAC system, and there've been things where we needed to have that.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly.
So if we. I'm going to get an exact number from Ed right now.
Is Ed always on call? I swear.
During budgets?
Christine, when you were gone, Jim Taft was on call for me too.
Well, Ed, they know what we're dealing with.
So these are just straight numbers. Current tax rate. You know, pennies per.
Hundred thousand.
For a hundred thousand assessed property because sometime, I know in the past, some moments, you know.
They got that right there.
It gets you a couple percentage points, but when you, then it's like $20.
Right.
For taxpayer and you sort of then make that.
So at the, yeah, so I can actually just copy this table. So right, I mean, it's. So if I change, oh, what is that?
Why did that? Oh, yeah, copy, so that was really, it really was, uh. Are you on YouTube then?
Oh, I see. I'm going to. So that is again.
This one.
It's fine. Okay, all right. Okay, so then this would become.
Hey, what wifi are you, all of you?
Uh, I'm on public.
Public?
Yeah. Public too.
I am as well.
Okay, so here's the difference if we go down to the 1.88. So. $166. For a $100,000 house? And. I mean, 832 is a lot better than 1,000.
It is.
Oh, which is a whole lot better than 18.
I mean, we use the, generally we use the, um, the ones in the middle to kind of.
These?
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, the 250 or the 300, you know.
3.44, 195.
Oh, okay, cool.
We're just going to put that in.
Yeah, I mean, that's like saving the average taxpayer 400 bucks.
By?
By using the surplus.
Right. Yeah. Uh, the, the 1.88, oh, in here.
Right. It goes from 919 to 511.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so that's a big one. And then taking away the 100,000, we go from 511 to 416.
Yeah.
So that's.
So that's another, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
It's 500, $500. And more for some people. How much money feels appropriate to leave in the capital reserve?
As much as we possibly can.
In case of.
It was at like, I think when I joined the board, it was at like 600 or 700.
I don't, I think we've put money in once, like part of the surplus went here.
I don't think we did.
Maybe not.
No, I don't think we've ever put anything in.
We took some out.
We took much out.
Took, we took on half of it.
Right. We've never had a year where we had a surplus that we weren't trying to.
Right.
Reduce.
Offset the tax rate.
Yeah. We wanted to, but.
Does it feel, okay, how much is the Black River thing? Is it worth it to put it in?
It's 10,000, what, it's 10,000.
It's not, it's not.
I mean, I think this is kind of where we need to be.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to go look at the floors.
I mean, that's my, I mean, it sounds like the door is a no brainer to wait, right? Like, that can wait.
Yeah.
That's what Jim was saying.
But the question is, is do we want to put it off till next year? No.
Because it'll be even harder to do it next year. It's not going to happen next year.
Yeah.
Because it's going to either be a door or somebody's health insurance or something.
Yeah.
16. I mean, is that where you use, I mean, like, do we use the, like, the 32,000 of capital reserve for those two things? And then that brings you down to like 310-ish? As long as this is 340.
But that's not going to make.
No, but at least it gets done and it takes a tiny bit off and I don't know if that affects the capital reserve that, you know, $32,000. Does that affect it that much?
100%. Considering where the capital reserve used to be, it makes me nervous, but as low as it is right now. This is low.
If you don't keep up maintenance on the buildings, we know what happens.
Right, yeah.
Exactly. Going to go look at the floors and, okay. Because I feel the need to look at the floors.
Do you know what I actually do as well, as we're making this decision?
Be right back. Just going to look at the door. Going to look at the floors.
I guess I'll go watch.
Hi, Michael.
Oh, you're going to hold on ready?
Already.
All right.
8 o'clock.
Tina, thank you for coming.
They did great.
They did.
See you tomorrow.
See ya.
Well, thank you, Tina. Did you see them every day?
Okay. So.
Well, what'd you see?
So the floors, the, so there's black tiles that look like part of the blue carpeting has been replaced somewhat recently and then the blue carpeting looks awful. Yeah, it's really dingy and it's pretty worn. Um, I mean, I don't.
The doors, the doors look okay to me.
Look okay to me, yeah. The doors look okay to me.
Not a lot, but.
I know. It's not much money. Did Jim give, Jim, like Lindsay, you're hearing us talk. Did Jim give you anything to tell you yes or no to what we are hearing or?
No, he had just said the doors are cosmetic, nothing safety related, and that he felt that it could wait a year. You know, he, he may not have the bigger budgetary picture that we're talking about in terms of, you know, some more expenses that are coming in the next fiscal year. But from where he stands, it was cosmetic, not anything security related.
I'm just wondering, like, if we're doing a Black, a Black River, I don't know if we call it a study.
Design.
Design, yeah. I, like, how cosmetic is it? Do we have to do it next year or if it's four years from now, is that?
Jim did not feel like it was a need to for next year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere around 16, I think 16,500 or so Christine, for the doors.
Yeah.
16,000, 1500?
Yeah.
Yeah, 1,000, not 100. 16,000, yep.
I think, I think we'd touch it.
Touch it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think take the doors out.
I think the carpet, I kind of think we need to keep.
I mean, I can go either way, but I, I would defer to the people in the building who have experience of, you know, if you, if you let it go, does it cause bigger problems and all of that?
The carpet?
Yeah.
I mean, it just doesn't look very nice.
No.
And, and I do remember Jim said to me, um, when we were talking about the difference between, I think it's what they called V C T tiles versus carpet. Jim had said that, you know, if we were ever to move forward in any sort of direction in terms of a renovation, that we could more likely reuse the carpet versus the V C T tiles, if that's something we want to consider.
Yeah.
The V C T tiles are, uh, not the carpet tiles, right Lindsay?
More like this.
That's correct. By like the kindergarten hallway Christine, those are the V C T tiles.
Yeah, so you can reuse the carpet tiles.
Right.
But not the tiles that we do.
Are we going to want to use the carpet tiles over again? I mean, like.
Probably not.
Gosh, I hope not.
So.
I know, so.
So what's the point of doing it if we're not, if neither, if we're not going to reuse any of them?
I just feel like, like that floor in four years is not, like, not going to look great.
It's going to be threadbare. Just repaint the walls and maybe people focus looking at your models.
Why, like orange Christine?
Look at the school board and then paint the floor orange.
So if you're going to do, right, so the question is, if you're going to do it, you want to do it right?
Right.
And you don't want to spend the money doing it right if you're going to be.
Ripping it up.
Ripping it up in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, as much as a new, new rug would look really pretty, I, I don't, I just, it feels wasteful to like just rip it up in two years, three years, even four years, like.
I, you know, I do feel like some of that is going to be threadbare.
And if, I mean, the other, the other thing to do would be to wait until we know whether the construction is going forward or not. Like, if it's not, then certainly it needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, yeah, I like that.
To wait.
Because we can wait a year.
That will be March next year.
March of next year, we'll know.
It's not ideal, but we're, you know, it's a tough budget.
Yeah.
Lindsay, what do you?
That sounds, that sounds reasonable to me. Waiting until March of next year and then when we have a firmer answer from the community and whether or not they would support a renovation, then we make a decision based on what the community tells us.
See, in the meantime, Christine, if any other school decides to pick up any floor tiles.
We'll take them.
I suppose that, that would be another, right.
If anybody else renovates, it gets rid of nice floor tiles.
We'll take them.
We'll borrow them.
And even if we are facing this, we were, we were talking about the fact that next year with the Essar fund, you know, with the, the Essar funded positions and the Title I money, you know, it's going to be really tough. But we still do have that capital. So the carpet could be done out of the capital fund.
That's what I was thinking too.
And just to help clarify numbers, we have two Essar funded positions and two title funded positions.
That's correct.
So we could potentially, like, how, would, would this school function without those four positions?
I mean, it would have a pretty drastic impact on her.
It would be like devastating.
I, I just like, I, I just need to. I can't imagine it.
So if you're reducing the budget by 100,000.
Yeah.
That's your proposal.
So that's one of those.
It's one. And we're, you know, the title, we don't know until, until we know.
Right.
Hopefully it's not that drastic, but it could be.
But, I mean, that, but that, just to reinforce that that's the right thing to do, that by, by pulling back a bit this year.
You're being proactive.
We're being proactive and, okay, good.
Okay, Lindsay, so here's where I think your marching orders are. And everybody else can chime in if I'm wrong. I think we're getting rid of a teaching position before we hire for that person. And we're going to hold off a year on the tiles and the doors. Were there any other things?
And just so that I'm clear Nikki, that this also includes using all of that surplus? Is that correct?
Yes, all of the surplus.
Okay, okay. Yep, yep.
I think it's part of the budget of that we choose, like we say, that we will use to assess. Yeah. Okay, so that took off 132,000?
Yeah, with, with the teaching position and the doors and floors.
Floors, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so. Maybe that gets us down to like 1.85 for a tax rate?
Well, no, cutting 100 takes us down to 188. Oh, yeah, I see. So, so it probably is about 18, maybe 18, but.
Let's, yeah, let's run numbers for 1.85. Okay, so if we're at 1.85.
That really, that moves it.
Yeah, so it's $333 for a $250,000 house.
That's pretty darn good.
Feels.
That's much better than 900.
Yeah, where were we before? Yeah, we were.
We were at 919, yeah.
Yeah.
And even 511, bringing it down if we just use the surplus, like.
Yeah.
333, that's like, that's.
That really did make a difference.
Okay, let's do it. I'm in.
So do you need, um, it's January 3rd, we have another meeting in February.
I think we need it before then.
I think we do too.
Yeah, I think we need a special meeting, but I wanted to go into that special meeting with Lindsay being able to say, this is your number, this is what we're, and we're voting and we're done.
Yep. Yep.
So Lindsay, can you, like, in our.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, can we just review to make sure, like?
You want me to recap for you what I'll bring to you in a, for a special meeting? Is that right?
No, I was just wondering, like, I, I think we've honed in on these things. I just want to make sure that we honed in on the right things. So what were the, what were the optional, what, what were our optional, like, you could just read them off. I know you had them in your presentation.
Yes. Let me, let me pull it up real quick for you. I think what you're. I think, are you thinking like the, what would, what is something we'd cut if we were to cut $10,000? That, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yep, so. $10,000 we'd cut from supplies. So between 15 to 25,000, we felt comfortable taking it from the H R A, the health reimbursement account. 50,000 was the removal of the work for the main entrance, which was 16,500, as well as the slate foyer, so 16,500. And then, yep.
Yep. Oh, yeah, keep going, sorry. And then the 100.
Was the, yeah, was the teaching position.
Okay, and those, so, so those were the categories if we were trying to hit certain numbers. The changes to this budget from last year, like, is there anything else that we should discuss? Like, what, what are the other changes from last year's budget to this year's budget? Are there any or not?
The, the only other thing that is about, I want to say it's about $10,000, is the F M system that we would like to put in the middle level classrooms. And that's 10,000 total.
I feel like that's an equity thing that I'm not willing to cut. Yeah, I'm not willing to cut that.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I would like. I want, and you guys can speak up. I would like to look at the H R A. Because like, I'd like Ed to look at. It's a fairly new program and we have had it now long enough to understand how it works. So I'd like Ed to run numbers of, we're using 80% or of the total and then maybe give us an extra 5% of leeway. and then maybe give us an extra five percent of leeway, and then let's cut that from the budget, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, unless he thinks it's an aberration this year, but as long as it's not an aberration, that seems like a save.
Well, because we've got a few years of struggle down there.
Yeah, at least, yeah, right? Yeah, and what, I guess, you guys, not everybody was here for the history of this. The HRA was part of the, the VHI, the insurance rebudgeting that happened. And so when that all happened, we didn't know how our staff was going to use the changes. And so with the HRA, we just budgeted that we were going to use a hundred percent. Yeah, that, that our staff was going to use a hundred percent. Which, at the time, we all thought was slightly unrealistic, I think even Ed did. But not knowing, we didn't want to get ourselves into a hole. So now that we have three years of data, I think we can create a much more reasonable estimate.
Yep.
Add a couple percentages of leeway in there so that we.
Just in case.
Yeah, just in case.
Yep.
We're not, I don't want to bare bones it by any means, but I also would like to create something realistic.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so you guys, you guys decide that number, and we're good with whatever number you decide for that.
Okay.
Take away the doors and the floors and the one position, and we'll schedule a meeting to figure out the total and vote on it.
What the total that is, yep.
Okay, I think we're good there. So I think that concludes our budget discussion. So this community survey was like a half, a half an idea, clearly. I'm moving on to the next topic, which was. So I had half an idea to, like, reach out to the community to try and engage them prior to the meeting or after the meeting.
On the name change or on, you know, just on general?
Yeah.
How do you feel about the school, what's going on?
Yeah, but at this point, I don't feel like it's a fully formed enough idea for me to implement it, and we would really need to be implementing it, like, the second.
Yeah.
So I think I'm just going to can that idea.
Yeah.
It's almost good in the spring for the coming year.
Yeah.
Just to give feedback.
Yeah.
Like a year in review, how'd we do, what do we?
Yeah, that's, right, like, at the, sort of towards the end of the school.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that.
When you say community, are you saying, like, all of Heartland or school community?
I was thinking all of Heartland. Just trying to figure out, like, what, what are people's questions, what are people's concerns, what do they see from us, because they don't see.
Are we communicating enough?
Right, right.
Do they feel that connection?
Community dinners.
Yeah.
Yeah. The hot breakfast the other week, wow, that was great.
Yeah, there was hot breakfast.
There was a hot breakfast for, like, anybody in the community when the power was out.
Oh, right, 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 yes.
That's brilliant.
I thought it was, that was great.
We had COVID, so I wrote it off.
You could have just opened your door and they could have chucked stuff in and just driven off.
We didn't have power, but we had COVID.
All of you.
And you all.
Every of the four of us.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so I think items for action, we are not going to vote on the budget right now, but we are going to set the next agenda, which will be to vote on the budget. Okay, so everybody pull out their phones, and I honestly am going to call Beth. Can it be entirely her?
Does it have to be an in-person, or can it be, like, on Zoom quickly, like, or?
Some of us have to be in person, but the bulk of us.
I think just one of us has to be here.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to ask an administrator to be here if I'm not here, so I'll be here. So we'll make it work. I'm, I'm going to be totally rude while Beth has family.
You can be remote.
Okay, well, no, I'm just asking, because, like, then if it's going to be a short meeting, can we do something in, like, the seven-thirty time or eight o'clock time? Because everything after school just feels hard. And Lindsay, did I miss the, the pulse, the pre-pulse questions? Remember we were going to do a survey?
Yeah, we, I think I remember our conversation would be at this meeting, we'd talk about what we would want to include in a survey, is that right?
Yeah, but we didn't, we, we apparently missed that in the changes and additions to the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can put that for February and do it then.
That's fine, so then for, in February, we'll talk about what we want in the survey and, and we can go from there.
Can I ask a logistical question, because sometimes I don't know the answer to this? Is it okay if, like, I have questions that I have in my head, can I, like, send that as an email to you, Lindsay, and, like, so for next meeting, we can just have it already there?
That's great.
Okay.
Yeah, you just can't send an email to more than two of us.
Okay, but I can send whatever I want to Lindsay.
You can send anything you want to Lindsay.
What am I going to get tomorrow morning?
This is such a great setup.
So I have, I have Beth on the phone, so everybody pull out their calendars.
Okay. I'm going to give you your calendar, wow, this is great.
Oh wait, I'm still sharing this. I think we should try and do it, how quickly, Lindsay, do you think that you guys can move forward?
I anticipate, I think I could call Ed tomorrow and we could do it really quickly.
Yeah, so.
I don't think it would take long.
I would like to meet in the next week.
Yep.
Yes, I think it's Kate, yes.
So what, what do you have?
I think yours is the worst. Scottney, six-thirty, Monday, I've got Weatherfield, Tuesday.
I really like them, and I just should step out.
We were thinking later, because it's just easier for people.
And then I've got.
Okay.
How soon can, Lindsay, how soon can you do this?
She said tomorrow.
I can call Ed tomorrow, and I imagine, I mean, we could get it, I mean, I don't know what people's thoughts are, but, like, we could do it for, I could be, I could be there virtually on Thursday, I have something else before.
Thursday evening at eight-thirty, but.
Yeah.
It's free for me, it's Friday.
It's Friday.
I can't.
I got basketball in the air.
Oh, oh, right, oh, right. Okay, yeah, Friday's out, okay, here we go. Monday, so I know you guys said seven-thirty, but I have to be at a hockey rink then, three nights a week, four nights a week actually, so.
Seven-thirty.
Yeah. So.
I don't know, maybe this is out there, but what about the morning time? Which may not be ideal for most people either, I don't know, I was just trying to think outside the box of other times.
I think that's really tough for Heather and Beth. Beth, I think you are really tough now, right?
Because you have to be out, out of the house pretty early. I mean, if we want to do it, like, super early, like, six AM, like.
Yeah, Heather's saying six AM, I don't know that we're going to.
Six-thirty, I could even do six-thirty.
I'm going to say the community.
I could do seven.
Pull them all over them, if we have a budget meeting at six AM. It just doesn't have good optics. What about Monday? Monday's tough.
What about Tuesday?
I could do. I could do, well, Christine.
I've got Weatherfield.
Yeah, Christine has Weatherfield at six-thirty, could people do six?
Wednesday?
Yeah, Tuesday is really tough for me, Tuesday and Wednesday are both at, what about Thursday, the twelfth?
Thursday?
Okay, we're on Thursday the twelfth now, Beth.
No Fridays.
Good, I have to be in the car for hockey at seven, so if we could do six-thirty on the twelfth?
I've got a.
I can do it.
Budget meeting if needed with Noah Scottney, but. What time is that, six-thirty?
How often are those needed?
Six on the twelfth?
I'll know on Monday, Colleen, if it's needed.
Okay, six on the twelfth.
Six, six on the twelfth, someone send that out.
Six on the twelfth works for Beth, oh yeah, we'll get it out.
Here, can I just text six to the twelfth?
Yeah.
That's six on the twelfth, I'll have Lori send it out to you all.
Colleen, that works for you?
Yeah, I'm surprisingly open next week, so.
Okay, Beth, I think we found it. Thank you. Yep, will do, okay.
I just grouped text in, okay.
Okay. Yes, it'll be a special meeting.
Special budget meeting?
Yeah. At six o'clock.
I won't be, I can't be here, and then Noah Scottney will be here.
Yeah. Yeah, Lindsay, can you be here on Thursday at six, the twelfth?
Yes, I can be there.
Okay, so Lindsay can be here, I'll be here, Trevor will be here, and then you just go. Ed will go, yeah. Okay. Probably not. Not, you guys don't need to be here for that.
It's going to be a quick meeting.
Yeah, so.
It's up to you.
Whether we should be here?
Yeah.
I think we will probably have to be here.
You'll have to be here.
I know, but it's not about the email I'm on.
Okay, yeah, because honestly, I'm hoping it's like a fifteen minute meeting.
Let or no, it's just a quick approval of the budget.
Yeah, and so we could do it, maybe there's a way that we can, like, have you guys join and record the meeting remotely or something?
Yeah.
Instead of, I didn't, I just don't want you to spend a half hour setting up for a fifteen minute meeting. Yeah, okay. So with that, we need to set the agenda for the following meeting. And we have a composting update.
Yep.
We need to set the date for the following meeting.
Isn't it?
There's a conflict.
There's a conflict.
Mike Nicholson's here doing the community visioning, cutting it from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
All right, so let's see, that is February.
Which means you could still meet.
Christine, we can't hear any of you there. You might be muted again.
Oh, what is that little warning that it tells us? It's saying your mic isn't working. That's what it says, the mic isn't working, and look, it's gone red, below.
Ghost in the machine.
I mean, would it be possible to keep the thing here?
So while they're fixing that, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll share one of my Christmas gifts.
Math jokes.
Since we were doing numbers, it says, one day the math instructor got tired of adding things up, what happened to him? He ended up in the hospital with an incremental breakdown. My oldest daughter got me that, she's awesome.
She is awesome.
I love that.
Yeah, that's cool.
I'll be in there. What is fine?
We tell jokes until we can hear you again. Things move in.
Nikki's putting her thumbs up like, yes, Michael, more jokes.
All right, let's see here.
If we can make the February meeting a little on the shorter side.
There's a funny one here, right? I think they're all funny, my wife laughs at them, she looks at me like I'm crazy. Oh. What's the best place to do math homework?
I give up.
On a multiplication table. This is all I needed was more jokes.
I just feel like that. One should never change.
We'll keep the agenda. So we're thinking seven.
All right, for those that are here, Nikki texted me, and she's saying for the February meeting, seven o'clock on the seventh, it is that already scheduled time, it's just pushing it back one hour from six to seven.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody virtually?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, great.
Nikki, we're good.
Awesome. Okay, so at this point.
Yes.
Budget, budget presentation preparation.
Oh, and it's kind of coming back.
Before the meeting. Do you have a date for the, set a date for the?
It's good for everyone to go, because we're kind of standing behind the budget, you know.
It's like behind, I think, though.
We are behind the budget.
Yeah.
We are behind that budget. We do.
Yeah. We'll wait on the seventh.
The sound and the lips are not meeting.
Nope.
Like, I can hear them.
Can I listen to that movie?
So for those virtually, Nikki texted, I don't know if you all can hear, but we can hear, Nikki, but it is sounding very strange from our end. Oh, it's, it's very strange over here, it is like the, I think what you probably said about two minutes ago, that's all coming through now, it's very strange. So what, what Nikki has texted me for an agenda for the next time was that pre-pulse, some of the questions, I think Heather will email me ahead of time, so we can share those. A compost update from students, but, and budget prep.
This is when I should be eating my dinner. Got some slurping my pasta.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to, to move to executive session.
I would make that motion, that we move to executive session. I will second that motion.
And then, Colleen.
I feel like Alina is smiling at something that I don't know.
I say aye.
So now I'm texting Colleen.
I know, what are they doing?
We can hear you now.
Yes, you can hear us now?
Yeah.
Yes, we cannot see you, but we can hear you.
It was delayed for a minute.
It was.
Bad about you.
Okay, so.
I'm stopping the recording.
Yes.
That's a good idea. Executive session. Wait, don't we need this? Don't we need some of them for executive session?
All right, so Colleen will have to sign back in.
Oh, okay, I was like, wait a minute.
Colleen, we'll, we'll send you a new meeting link.
Okay.
Lindsay.
Oh, she can hear us, I don't have to text you.
We'll send you a new meeting link on my computer.